We all come out of this like school that puts you in that box. And we're all have to figure out how to break out in life and and walk our own path.
It's true.
Yeah.
And walk it nobly.
That was good.
Was that funny?
That was really funny.
That was good.
Okay, thanks.
I guess it's not just fly puns we've got.
But puns on the fly. What's up y'all? It's Courtney Polis and welcome to another impassioned episode of Under All Is The Land. I am here with my rock star co-stars, Silke Fernald.
Hello.
And Dominique Madden.
Hi.
So, um, today we are talking about transformation, which I always love. And before we bring on our esteemed guest, Walker Noble, we are going to have a little chat about what's going on in LA today. It's the city council is in the news.
The tea is hot.
The tea.
It's gonna burn you.
Oh, my gosh.
Ouch.
Yeah, so just for perspective for people who don't know what's happening, which if you live in LA. Even outside of LA, you have to know, but um, the city council members, the three of the city council members were um, uh.
Busted.
Were busted um, on a recording from, I think it was like late last year where they were discussing how they could redistrict or, you know, redraw the lines of the districts to benefit Latinos, okay? And um, in that conversation, there were a lot of like slanders being said, there was a lot of like discussion regarding races and you know, uh, Narice Martinez went to the extent of calling uh, Mike Bone and Son a monkey in Spanish.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty gnarly stuff. I mean, you know, they, they, they talked about, I mean, they talked about various things that were just like, they shouldn't be discussed in a meeting, but also I think there are rules against these meetings being held without transparency and without like people being able to be a part of these meetings.
Well, you know, in real estate, we always say like who you work with matters, but in I think like we're now seeing that who you elect really, really matters. So we get these ballots in the mail, they give these kind of like milquetoast descriptions of who the candidates are. But you, if you are not really involved, you don't know what these people really stand for or who they really are. I mean, I personally, and you know, this is my pet peeve, but you know, watched the city council fail the city of Los Angeles throughout COVID and especially beyond. Thankfully now there's an end in sight for the uh, eviction moratorium and the state of emergency, where the last city in the entire country to let go of that. And, and I'm not surprised that these people have their own personal agendas that affect all Los Angeles that we're not privy to.
Yeah, I think it's just so important to read when we get those ballots in the mail with like a hundred people on there, nobody really care, uh, nobody knows them very well, like you said. We need to research before we put a little checkbox.
Yeah, no, we're gonna bring somebody on this show to talk about the candidates and to talk about the ballot props because I feel like there should be specialists, people who it's their job to be able to explain what these, who these people are and what they truly stand for before we go to the ballot box. And in this case, it's like another revelation, which shouldn't be a revelation, that guess what? Sometimes the people that you're voting for are bigots and self-interested and despicable human beings and they ought to resign. You know, she didn't even fully resign at first. That was crazy. Oh, I'm gonna step down. But I'm still gonna be on the city council, the audacity.
Even, even.
She should be ashamed of herself.
Her resignation letter, if you've read it, it is like a slap in the face, not a single apology in it, you know, actually it talks about everything she's done for the community.
Yeah.
And actually ends off to say, and this is the funniest line to me, to all the little Latina girls, I hope that I've inspired you to dream bigger than, you know, than you thought that you could have. And it's like, excuse me, miss.
She's trying to save her face.
You wanna encourage people to be like you, who have now just further corrupted our city council, which has already been rampant with different corruption.
Well, what, what that letter tells you says she doesn't think there's a problem with what she did.
Yeah.
And she's trying to save face and now she's trying to pull a whatever, some big speech out of her hat, you know, inspiring and da, 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 da. It's like, don't use that platform to, to, to give that message when you have fucked up so badly.
And it's like, what, what would have happened if they wouldn't have been caught? How many of these conversations are happening without people knowing, without transparency in private, in our city government, but also in our state government, in our federal government? It's so despicable to me that we count, we have, we are bound as, as people who live in LA to the whim and will of the, this very small, select, obviously biased group of people. It affects every single one of us and they are seemingly unvetted. There's no leadership.
And meanwhile, we know everything about every presidential candidate, we know what, whatever coffee brand they drink before we go into elections. But we know nothing about any of these other names on the ballot, it's just a sea of names. And I find myself sometimes when I don't have time to research or it gets overwhelming, I just don't even check. I just don't check a box.
I think most, most people just vote their party.
Yeah, or I just vote the party. I'm like, what, and what's the woman? Ah, I'll go for the female on my, my party. I'm like, okay, this could, how wrong can it be? Well.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You know, the, the scary thing is that you wouldn't know unless you overheard these conversations. Because these kinds of conversations are ones that only typically happen in private, you know? And so like, you know, like, obviously we've seen other people get taken down, like Mark Ridley Thomas and, uh, you know, Jose Huizar. I'm not sure how you say his last name, I think it's Huizar.
I think that's right.
But you know, you know, with, with this particular situation, you had three council members, you know, um, Narice Martinez, Gil Sadio and Kevin De Leon all meeting with uh, the head of the labor board, um, what's his name? Ron, Ron Herrera, I think his name is, you know? And this is a tight-knit conversation, so four people conversation, if there hadn't been someone recording, none of us would know that their entire goal in their figuring out how to redistrict, which then they then later on went to do. And it actually did impact at least one candidate, which um, you know, I mean, whether you like her or not, uh, Nithya Ramon.
Oh, good, I hate her.
But you know, but.
She is the worst.
Yeah, and apparently they believe that too.
Oh, gosh.
It's one thing.
Because they, they redrew the line so that it, 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 you know, so that it worked against her in her district. But you know, like the fact that you have people who are able to like do these things, like who are also the ones who would be benefiting from the move should make you question whether they should actually be the ones making that decision in the first place.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's age old though, I mean, Republicans gerrymander, everybody knows it, like, and then you know, they accuse Democrats of redistricting and you know, I mean, this is like something that needs to be um, dealt with on a, on a higher level, but it just seems like the city council runs like wild with whatever ideas they want without any accountability. And finally, they're accountable and even when they're held to accountability, they still have a hard time being accountable, like they're still on the city council, right?
They're still there, yes, Kevin De Leon, Gil Sadio, step the fuck down.
Get down.
Period, step the fuck down. I'll be the next one in that city council meeting screaming at your ass so that you guys can't continue with it.
Okay, I'll be there filming it. I'll be there filming it. So you see, it affects people to the point of passion and F-bombs and that's the reality of the impact that it's having on those of us who actually live here and that's real.
Yeah.
That's real.
You know, cause it's like, you know, you're, you're in a city that is a melting pot, like a city that has so many amazing people from so many different walks of life. And to like chastise several different demographics in that city that you're supposed to be supporting, that's crazy to me, like you know, not only were they, you know, talking horribly about black people, but to talk about Jewish people, about Armenians, like this is our culture, you know? And, 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 and if you're trying to take down any of them, you know, I, I just feel like the, like even though your goal is to help Latino people in the city, you can't.
You can't do that at the expense of other people.
Yeah.
And, and also, let's face it, a lot of those people that they're mentioning have already had representation issues. It's like they're already coming from under, you know, like the short end of the stick already. Why are you gonna make it worse?
Yeah.
You know, when you're supposed to be for the people, you're not elected to only represent this one tiny group, like it's so small-minded and power hungry and disgusting.
You would think that this kind of race, yeah, you would think this kind of racism only happens in small towns where it's mostly white, old men, whatever. But in, like you said, LA where there's everybody, everything, all at once, we're all together, like that the word racism even comes up in a town, in a city like this.
But people who experience are not surprised, they're just outraged. I think like to the fact that our government is still political, I mean, you know, politically charged against like African-American people is no surprise to people who are African-American, right? Like the fact that your police department might be biased, that's not a big surprise, right?
There's a reason that we question everything.
Right.
And whether it's for us or against us, but things like this just further perpetuate that. It's like, how am I, I can't even trust my councilperson to have my best interest at heart.
Right.
How?
Who is also from arguably a minority group, where you would think, you, don't you know?
Right.
Like why? Like, it's.
Yeah.
It's just so wrong.
So crazy. So there you go, and that's how we feel about that. We're gonna turn the tables for a second and invite an Acme client and also one of our great friends and an extremely accomplished person and um, talented artist, Walker Noble.
Thanks for having me.
I love the shirt, by the way.
So, this is my shirt, I designed it.
Oh, that's amazing.
Well, let's introduce you actually, cause you're a man of many talents.
Thank you.
So um, Walker Noble, you have uh, you can introduce yourself, you don't need me to do it.
Yes, uh, hey, my name is, do I need to talk to the camera?
You can, that's your camera right there.
Uh, my name is Walker Noble, uh, here in LA, based out of here, based here in LA. Um, Courtney was my wonderful Realtor, uh, we recently bought a home and um, this is how I met this motley crew of wonderful women.
I'll take it.
Yeah. I'm an artist, uh, mo- most importantly, I'm a husband, a father, an artist, um, entrepreneur and um, I wear many hats. And uh, let's get into it.
Yeah, let's get into it.
Thank you, thank you, I didn't design this, but.
So first, let's start with where you're from.
Yes, yes, yes. So I am originally from Atlanta, Georgia, um, grew up on the east side of town and moved to San Francisco when I was about twenty-five, lived there for a couple of years, moved back to Atlanta and I always knew I wanted to get back to the west coast. And uh, moved back in two thousand nine and I've been here ever since.
Okay.
Yeah.
And prior to COVID, what were you doing for a living?
Wow, that's a great question. Um, so uh, I did a lot of things, but I always had a corporate job, um, I was in sales. And it basically, I, I viewed it as my sponsor, if you will, for my dreams, right? Uh, much like a lot of people here in LA.
I love that.
Yeah.
I've never heard anyone say that like that, but I love that.
The job was my sponsor. I definitely, it wasn't the end for me, I knew that, you know, I wanted to do more, but you know, bills needed to be paid. Um, so I had a corporate job, I was in sales and then the nature of the business that I was working for, we sold products to offices. And when, you know, March happened and the world shut down, there was no one else to sell to, cause there was no offices, people were not working in offices anymore. And um, that's when the whole shift happened, so.
Let's talk about that shift.
Yeah.
So you, you were like, okay, my job is basically disappeared.
Right.
Now what?
Right.
And what'd you do?
So I was living, it's all serendipitous, um, I met my wife hour in twenty fifteen, our second date was at this place called the Artist Brewery Lofts in Lincoln Heights, it's the largest artist commune, uh, they say in the world, actually. And so, you know, I've always been an artist, it was something I always did, like on the side, but um, you know, you're not really allowed to have dreams, if you will, in certain places, like you're expected to get a job and do the whole corporate thing, follow the rules, whatever, right? Um, so I, 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 I say that to say, years, years forward, I'm still living here at the, at the brewery Artist Lofts and we actually move in together and I remember when the pandemic happened and she said, why don't you get back into your artwork? You already live in this community, you're already doing art again, why not give it a try from a business standpoint? And that's what we did.
How'd you do it?
Yeah, um, so at first, you know, I was afraid to start selling stuff because people were at home and out of, out of work and everything like that. But then my wife said, you know what, there's people at home that need joy, they need happiness and art does that for a lot of people. If they can afford to buy your art and it's not super expensive, they can. If they can't, they can't and that's okay. So I had to put myself out there. So I started, you know, a little website, well, actually my wife made the website. Let's, hold on, let me just say.
She's the wind beneath your wings.
Let me, let me just say that. When they make the statement, you know, behind every great man is a good woman. Not just behind me, but beside me, if not just in front of me a lot of times as well. You know, I have to credit all my success to my wife, uh, she's been, you know, she, she set up the business for me, she did all the infrastructure, all the backend so I could just create and kind of just run with it. She's actually a school teacher, uh, special education teacher, uh, by trade. So you know, that's her passion in life and um, it's actually her company, Walker Noble is, um, you know, I'm just the face and do the work with.
Let's go.
It all goes to her. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So she owns you.
She, yes.
That's how it's supposed to be.
Her and my daughter, yeah, for sure. For sure, for sure. No, so what happened, um, believe it or not, um, shout out to Ebi of Sunbeam Vintage in Highland Park. Uh, she, she, she gave me a shout out on Instagram and I'll never forget that day. We went from selling like, you know, one or two orders, whatever, you know, we just started the website and that day, we got like two hundred orders, we had we had no way to fulfill it, we had, and that was like the power of social media, right? We had no way to fulfill the orders, we had no packaging, nothing, cause we weren't expecting that kind of influx in business. And you know, my wife got online and she did her research, she ordered boxes, ordered, you know, plastic sleeves, the whole shebang. And we finally got the business truly up and running just because of that one surge in business. And you know, I'm proud to say that since, you know, it was like March or whatever of like twenty twenty, there hasn't been a day since till this day that we haven't had an order come through from, from a customer. So it's been a really, knock on wood, it's been a really good.
Wow. So to break it down, it's like you had this kind of like startup website where you were creating pieces that were sell, like were they prints or what?
Yeah, so I was.
He's a visual artist.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was selling at markets and things like that and I was doing a lot of painting still and canvases, I had some placements in hotels and things like that. So I kind of had a, almost a litmus test, if you will, of what was popular with clientele and what kind of art sold and what didn't sell. So that kind of set me up for that. Um, and then when the opportunity, what they say luck is preparation meeting opportunity. Um, when the opportunity hit, we were prepared. Um, believe it or not, despite not having all this stuff, I was prepared in knowing what the customer wanted, what was popular, what people liked. So I had to adjust the business from like doing like one-off paintings and things like that, cause it was just too slow, to now, um, you know, taking original pieces.
And reproducing them.
Reproducing them.
So you had to find somebody who could print volume.
Yes.
And that person that you found ended up, right, being like a key piece of your success, like you found this person and then took some opportunity there too, talk about that.
So crazy story, um, a very large retailer that I'll remain unnamed as for now, but I don't know if I can mention it, but um, very, very large retailer, they came to me early on and said, hey, is this Walker Noble? So yeah, they found me on Instagram. Um, we wanna create like twenty-five thousand pieces, whatever, right? And I'm used to selling like one or two pieces to a customer.
Right.
And by the way, we want them framed, under glass, we want them shipped a certain way, UPC codes, the whole shebang. I mean, we're talking like a full-on manufacturing factory type deal. There was no way that I could do this, no way. There, I did not have a fa- I didn't have the setup, anything. So my response to them was, is that it? And they said, no, this is a very small order that we start off with, you know? Our, our normal orders are like thousands more. I said, okay, great, cause I thought this order was too small for me. I had no way to get this done, but I was not gonna say no to this opportunity and that's the power of saying yes, right? So I get off the phone and my wife looks at me and she says, figure it out, and she went back to doing what she was doing. So this is prime time COVID, we're talking Tiger King COVID, I'm not talking Squid Game COVID, we're talking prime time, you know, quarantine, whatever, right? So at the time, orders were being turned left and right, cause retailers couldn't keep up, you know, doors were being shuttered, you know, whatever it may be. So my plan was, I'm gonna call the manufacturer, I'm gonna show him the PO from this reputable company, he's gonna front me the money and we're gonna go from there. Cause keep in mind, when you work for a lot of these companies, there's ninety-day terms. Meaning if you place the, they place the order in January, they don't pay you till the end of March, if not April. So as a maker, you have to front the money for production.
Right.
With no guarantee.
That they will take it.
That they're, they're gonna take the order.
Wow.
That's the risk that you take.
Can bankrupt people.
Absolutely, one hundred percent. So what, what normally happened before, before COVID, they had trade shows in Vegas where they would have companies that would make that kind of art for the large retailers and they had the money. Right? They're multi-million dollar companies, it was no big deal if they took a fifty thousand, seventy thousand dollar hit on production. And the reason why they didn't really approach artists such as myself because, because we couldn't scale up quickly enough. So I called about ten manufacturers in a week and all of them said, no. At this current moment, we can't do this because of just the state of the world and I know it's a reputable company, but we're not willing to take the risk. Okay. So I go back to the uh, uh, to the retailer and we have a meeting and I said, hey guys, I can't do it. And they were like, see, this is why, you know, we don't work with artists of your size. I said, oh, wait, 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 it's not me, it's you. Word on the street is, at this moment, because of retail, not just you, but retail is hurting right now just because of just the world. It's not that I can't, it's just that nobody wants to work with me at the moment, you know, it's so whatever. But I said, look, let's not make this contentious, let's make this work. Partner me with a manufacturer that you trust and that you know, that's willing to take the risk and let's see what we can do. So they did. I meet with the manufacturer and he says, alright Walker, here's the deal. Before you were go- before you met me, you planned on getting this manufactured yourself and you planned on making a profit of seven to nine dollars per piece on thousands of pieces, right? Great margin, it sounds like a little, but trust me, it's not, it's a great margin for that kind of art, whatever it may be. Here's the deal, I'm willing to take all the risk, I'll do all the manufacturing, everything, however, you're taking a haircut. You're gonna go from nine dollars a piece to the deal that we made, which was substantially less than that. However, I assume no risk, I put up no money, I do nothing but to send him a file of the artwork and he takes all the risk. So as I'm leaving the factory, I look around and I said, wait a minute, this place is huge, is this all for that one client? Oh no, I represent over twenty retailers. Okay. With that being said.
The block picking.
Everything that I don't sell to them, I want you to be my exclusive manufacturer, my agent, if you will, and I want you to sell every single piece of art that we don't sell to them, I want you to pitch it to every single one of your clients. That order went from, um, you know, a few thousand pieces to over fifty thousand pieces in one week, because now I'm being sold in about seventeen to twenty major retailers as we speak.
Yep.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
And that first retailer did not ask for exclusivity?
No.
Wow. Yeah. So that changes the game, doesn't it? But you know.
They did, but I told them no.
Okay.
Because I said, I'm not gonna cut myself off at the knees and not work with anyone else, cause I'm so reliant on you to place orders.
Right.
I said, as long as I'm not selling the exact same products, of course, it's gonna be in the same vein because I have a style of art. However, you guys get first look, I'll give you, you know, whatever, you know, you look at that first, whatever you don't want, just allow me to sell to everyone else and we can, we can roll. And that's what we do.
So in real estate, you know, like value propos- propositions are really important, like knowing what it is that you bring to the table and being able to kind of hold your ground whenever people are trying to negotiate or discount you or whatever. It's so critical. It's, and in the moment where it's high pressure, you need the money, right? Like, it's like, I need to pay my bills too, but being able to say, I would rather have, work with people who know my value and, and are willing to work with me, understanding my value is critical, it's very similar. It's like you could have completely, out of desperation, just out of like not knowing or feeling like, oh, I just need this one deal to go through. You could have done it differently and not ended up where you are right now.
Or you could have been intimidated by the big name.
Yeah.
Of the retailer.
And let's also talk about the moment. This is a moment where businesses are shutting down, everybody has anxiety and he looks at this moment and goes, it's an opportunity for me. Now I'm on, I'm the, I'm the only game in town and created something new, a new way of doing it that ultimately, you know, has led to, you know, tremendous amount of success.
And so because of that, and I wanna, I wanna bring this back to how you and I met too. Um, because of this success with this one retailer and now with the, all, all the other retailers, um, the name got out there. I don't have thousands and thousands of followers, it's not about that, right? You can be a micro influencer that has a very strong influence with ten thousand followers in a very specific niche. And that's what I have, instead of just being with all these fake followers and millions and millions and millions. So large retailers then found me because they were looking, you know, I, I have to, I'd be remiss to say this. The death of George Floyd, the unfortunate death of George Floyd definitely opened up a lot of doors for people of color and artists and makers and everyone else.
How so?
It gave people a new, uh, I would say awakening, if you will.
Consciousness.
Like a new consciousness, um, people started opening up their eyes because it was just right in front of you, you saw it. And anyone with any humanity was like, this isn't right.
Right.
Right? And because of that, and just what was going on in the world and just, just the amalgamation of, of that and COVID and everything else all combined, um, the doors, if you will, or the books, if you will, were opened up to people. Um, to women, to men, men of color, women of color, you name it, BIPOC, you know, creators, whatever it may be. And um, you know, it, it's sad that it took that for it to happen. Um, you know, and, and, and I wish that never happened, but I can say that that was one of the positive effects, if you can count that as a positive. I mean, there's nothing positive about anyone dying.
It's more awareness and like kind of corporate accountability for what, where they're opening doors.
You had a lot of businesses that now were approaching me, very large retailers that are, that have approached me, where some of them I've turned down. Um, not all money is good money. I've had some retailers who I knew, or at least I felt in my heart that this was a publicity grab, this was a play, this wasn't really a long-term partnership, um, it wasn't really out of a, a, a place of authenticity.
Right.
Um, and so.
The Bank of America, zero money down.
The guilt offer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, PR stunt, PR stunt.
It was a PR stunt and, you know, I've walked away from some deals too and people would say, well, oh, that was a huge bag, how can you walk away from that? Not all money is good money.
Not all money is good money.
Yeah.
We have that experience as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we turn people down too.
And to go back to what you said about being in a market that's volatile and still saying that this is a great time to do it. So quick story about how Courtney and I met, um, I was following her for years on, on Instagram and I happened to be at At Water Village eating at my favorite acai place, Ritual Acai. Those are my guys over there. Um, and I was sitting outside and she walked by and I was like, Courtney, and she was like, what are you doing? And I was like, you know, I'm, I'm eating, whatever. She's like, I'm on the way to a meeting, are, did you buy? Have you, you know, are you still renting? I was, I'm still renting. She was like, you're bullshitting, like, we need to go ahead and buy something, you're just giving money away, let's just try.
No, let's get a little deeper into this because you actually had all the excuses, well, my rent is so cheap and I don't wanna be in a multiple offer situation. I don't like being a multiple offer, I'm not gonna overpay for something.
That's real.
And I was like jumping every hurdle for, with you.
And now, keep in mind.
Receptive to, receptive to it.
I was, you, you put me in the game and we closed on our house November of last year, so right before, you know, everything jumped up as far as uh, mortgage rates, whatever, so we were still in the threes. And we were in that market together with houses, I mean, we're talking a million over asking, I mean, people weren't even like, they were just bidding off of emotion, didn't even make sense, right? Um, you know, forty offers on one home, houses going into escrow within like three days or whatever, it was ridiculous. And we got to a point where, you know, you gave me the best advice, Courtney was like, cause I wasn't gonna give up, that just wasn't in my nature, right? My wife was like, she was so, she was pregnant, she was like eight months pregnant, like she was like super pregnant. She stopped going on open houses, like I literally saw the house that we ended up buying by myself. And um, Courtney said, let's start looking for houses that have been on the market for thirty-plus days that are out of your price range. And I was like, wow, what a concept. I was like, okay, I was like, I'm gonna switch the, the Zillow search and the Red, whatever, search or whatever. I'm gonna switch that search to like higher than what it was expected and she was right. And the house that we found, um, I told, cause remember we had a house where like the, um, the inspection didn't come through well.
Right.
Whatever. And so I told my wife, I said, look, if the inspection comes out clean and everything else is good and it's just cosmetic, we're in there. Cause that's, I'm, I'm a designer, I can do that, like that's nothing. Um, if the engine is good, but all we gotta worry about is reupholstering the seats, cool, like we're good. Right? That's all we need and that was the house that we found.
Well, that's the thing is that you do have to, if you wanna really be successful in buying real estate, you have to figure out where your strengths are. So if you're an alt-cash buyer and your dad has lots of money, you can play in those, in the sizzle with the steak houses. But if you're like just getting in and you actually can add some value and as a designer and as somebody who has like a design instinct, you already saw partnerships, it was like, ding, ding, ding.
Yeah.
And you did do a partnership on that one, right?
I did.
And that's public, we can talk about that now, yeah?
It's public.
Okay, so let's talk about it.
Yeah, so uh, Westtown, uh, wonderful partner of mine, uh, they actually approached me, we started selling wall art together and you know, I came to them and said, look, you know, we're doing well, we're doing a lot of business together, let's, let's extend this relationship, let's expand it, let's, let's be official. And um, they were kind enough to gift my baby a nursery, cause the baby was on the way. And um, I came to them, I was like, hey, you know, I just bought this new house, um.
Wink, wink.
I think it would be nice, you know, to do a whole, yeah, to do a whole thing. So yeah, so we collaborated together and designed my home, did a full shoot and you know, I have a line with them now and everything like that, so.
Wow. This is what I'm saying, it's like, it's like, think about, just like, let's just like canonize it for a second. COVID happens, you're selling. Covid happens, you're selling a product to offices.
Yep.
That falls apart. And in a span of like a couple of weeks, you've created a possibility for yourself that ultimately involves like huge retailers. Hundreds of thousands of orders, buying a house for your new family.
Getting it furnished.
Getting it furnished, designed by a major retailer. I mean, like, it's all your manifestation though.
Yeah.
Because you believe you deserve that.
Yeah, it was it was definitely a dream come true. Um, people ask me if I'm shocked and I'm gonna say no.
Yeah, you made it happen.
Yeah, I'm not being like arrogant. I'm just saying that I, like Courtney said, I always, I'm a good person. I put out good energy. We'll talk about this by Madewell. This is a collaboration. You know, I just believed in just putting good energy out there and I just knew that karma is a real thing. And when you when you do well, you know, it'll come back to you tenfold.
Good things come back.
Good things come back to good people.
And also like, you know, I know this is true for me with regard to females in real estate. Like I feel like when you show people and you li- you actually live by the standards that you're 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 selling, you know what I'm saying? Like, not only am I saying it, because I'll be honest. I have been in a lot of conferences with a lot of people who really enjoy being the only woman in the room. They don't want competition from people like me. They don't really want me to have a voice because it takes away from them as far as they can see. And and that's not me. I'm always there lifting up leadership and 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 training and and supporting financial independence for women. And I live by it and it's real. And similarly, it's like you get the opportunity to show people what's possible.
Yeah.
And really like live it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's so inspiring. It's so cool.
Yeah.
Thank you. You know, my biggest barrier to entry for a lot of people of color, I would argue as well, um, it was the uh down payment, right? That was my biggest barrier into into homeownership. And you know, to be able to go from, you know, we always had a job and you know, uh whatever. But to be able to create a business that allowed me to have a down payment to you and I to go out, you know, and find a home. I mean, it was just a blessing. I I remember, you know, we used to drive up and down a lot of the neighborhoods and we'd see people of a similar age with a stroller, you know, kids. And we're like.
How do they do that?
Yeah, like, you know, why can't, we went to college and we did the whole thing and why can't we have that too? It just doesn't make sense. But a lot of times, you know, in the African American community, when people make it, we often give money back to our families as opposed to them giving us money, right? So I didn't have family help or anything like that. And I'd say everyone has family help, but you know, a lot of my friends who did buy, they had a lot of family help.
Lots of people do.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, and you will probably have money to help your kids, you know what I mean?
And that and I and and to your point, I think that's the beauty of it is that I'm positioning myself to where hopefully, you know, Harper and 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 my future child coming. You know, will be in a position where they can say, hey dad, can I have X amount of dollars? I wanna buy a home too. So that's what I'm doing everything now to kind of set that up and that generational wealth.
You can take the equity out of your current home by the time they buy a house.
We already talked about it. We already talked.
There you go. There you go.
You know, I think what's amazing about this story is like how you really have been the architect of your life.
Yeah.
In it, you know, like you really took what some people would take and feel like, okay, well, I'm deflated. I don't know where to go from here. And they, you know, things could have gone south.
Sure.
You were like, I'm gonna create a new opportunity. And not only am I going to create that opportunity, but I'm going to turn that opportunity into
Thank you.
Many opportunities. And I think that is amazing.
Yeah. It's crazy what you'll do when your back is against the wall. And you know, I think the power of saying no is very important, but also the power of saying yes. And not being afraid just to take that chance and say, you know what? I have nothing to lose. I'm gonna try.
Yep.
I'm gonna give it my all and and if we fall, we fall. You know, I'm not gonna die. Like, it's all good. Like, we'll get back up and we'll go at it again. Um, but thankfully it paid off.
I was just going to say that like there were so many points during that like starting moment where you were just getting the company off the ground and you had taken that big order.
Yeah.
And you were trying to figure out how to make that happen where you could have, you know, like walls were put up.
Sure.
Hurdles were put up. And instead of like, oh, shoot hurdle, can't, you know, turn it around. You jumped over the hurdle. And that actually reminds me a lot of what we do in our business too, because you know, we find a lot of people who do throw hurdles in front of themselves or hurdles that come up in our process. And you know, the people who are successful in it are the ones who look for the solution
Yep.
to jump the hurdles.
Yeah.
You know, and it's just, it's amazing.
I think to Courtney's credit too, I think, you know, when people find a Realtor, they they've gotta be able to connect with their Realtor as well. Um, she had an energy that I liked. I'll I often joke with my wife, like, I I tell her, if I was a white woman, I'd be Courtney, right? We have very similar like, you know, you know, you know, we got it out the mud, right? Like, nothing was handed to us. Like, we had to go out and get it. And even throughout our entire process of, you know, bidding against a lot of people and, you know, she always was like, don't give up. She didn't have to tell me that because I wasn't. But like, she always was like, let's do this. Let's do, let's strategize. Let's do this. Let's do that. And shout out to Aisha too for writing all those papers. Yeah, yeah. But um, you know, I just, I just feel that if if you're gonna do that kind of a transaction with someone then that big, um, you've gotta like that person, you know?
Yeah.
And shout out to Leslie too, Leslie Black. Uh, I'm sorry. I know you guys.
And I always say that too. I'm like, your agent needs to be somebody you want to hang with because you will be spending so much time with them.
Yeah.
They become your.
I saw Courtney a lot. Yeah.
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 I mean, it's like fighting a war together, especially in that kind of a market where like, it's like you're trying to get in where you can fit in. You gotta be creative. You're writing letters. You're doing all the things. I mean,
Yeah.
Gatsby did beautiful watercolors, remember, for the houses and things? But at the end of the day, like in a seller's market like that, like it always comes down to money. It just always does.
Yeah.
Emotion aside, it's like.
Oh, hold on. Let me say something that you taught me too. So all the buyers out there that are worried about about being the second offer that's on the list, I'm telling you it's a good place to be and here's why. When they start looking at that money under that microscope, it starts looking real funny under the light for some people and they fall out of escrow. And next thing you know, you're first up, right? Cause we had that happen a couple of times where people like, you're number two on the list, but this person may fall out. And they did.
Yeah.
Right? So like, don't, don't be discouraged. I mean, it's definitely, I don't ever think it's a bad time to buy. I really don't.
No, I agree.
I'd buy in this market if I could.
This is a great market to buy in. This is the best market to buy in.
Yeah, this is where you don't have the million dollars over asking.
Right.
You know.
Tons of competition.
I've seen houses like normally back when I bought, like I still look, cause like I I go to open houses because I like to see the design aesthetics that people do. I see houses where I'm like, I'll even call Cor- Cor- call Courtney. I'll be like, yo, this house would have been off the market in three days.
Yep.
It's three weeks and it's still here. Like, what?
Yeah, it's such an opportunity space.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, we spend a lot of our time trying to encourage people to get off the fence because of, because it is so good right now.
Just refinance.
But yeah, exactly. Just refinance. And your property value has gone way up since you bought it.
Especially with the alterations that I've made and stuff like that.
Heck, yeah.
Yeah. And that's another thing too, like, when you're looking for a house, like, you've gotta take an L somewhere. Like, people don't really like, like, now, I'd have all the money in the world, right? But I had a good amount of money, you know, to be able to put down. But even with that, you're not gonna walk into a house that's just like.
Perfect.
It doesn't matter what range you're in. Buy a wishes ahead ten.
Yeah, it's true.
You'll never find exactly.
Where's the eighth bathroom?
That pretty much approximates my dream house. So if anybody out there wants to go in on it with.
But what I learned is like, even though you're gonna take an L, what you also realize too is there's credits that you can get from the sellers because we negotiated that. Um, and then also too, if you're gonna spend twenty, fifty, whatever, thousand dollars, you're not gonna miss it. I don't mean to sound crazy. I know it sounds like a wild number, but like when you're doing renovations on your home and you need that, if you need a new roof or if you wanna add that bedroom or extend whatever, when it's all said and done, just view it as a bad night in Vegas. Like, you're not.
No, but wait, no, you know what?
You get more out of it.
You're gonna get paid back for it. It's not like shopping for expensive shoes. Yeah, it's like
Yeah.
That money's gonna come back to you when you sell. It's an improvement. We can list. A praiser can see it.
And you consulted with me on what are the proper things to invest in right now that are gonna get me the return on my investment. As opposed to me just saying, I'm gonna do this and I get no money out of that.
Right.
Like you told me the things I was gonna get money out of.
But you bet well.
Exactly. No, it comes back to you. It that's, that's always the key to to doing repairs and renovations. Nothing too specific and make sure that it's something that buyers, future buyers will value, unless you wanna just write it off as a bad night in Vegas, right? Yeah, unless, but but with rent, with your mortgage, you're not throwing it away. With your improvements, you're not throwing it away. It's all gonna come back to you when you sell.
Yeah.
So different than the psychology of um of renting.
Yeah.
You know, it's just a totally different thing when you're investing in yourself.
Yeah.
And as a business owner, as a as a self-employed person, that tax break that you get is critical. I mean, it's huge.
One hundred percent. Yeah, we just dealt with that, whatever. Yeah, it's, you know, we have a lot of self-employed people here in LA.
Yeah.
Um, so that's very important. And don't think that just because you're self-employed, that the banks are gonna look at you crazy and that you can't get approved for a loan. Like, I'm living proof. You can. Like, trust me. Leslie Black, we fund LA.
She can really like.
No, she got super creative. She she definitely made it happen very quickly. Um, you know, I'm actually gonna meet with her um next week. Um, you know, I've never met Leslie in person.
You haven't?
Yeah, we always spoke, uh, you know, spoken on the phone, whatever. Like, we're like close. It's like, it's weird. It's like we talk and stuff like that because we definitely wanna get involved with something else. And I called her, I was like, Leslie, you loan me all this damn money. We never met in person. We're gonna meet for coffee. Like, so she was like, yes, let's do it. And she's right around the corner from me. So it was great.
Well, I hadn't met her in person until she came on the podcast.
Wow.
Yeah.
And you guys have done millions of dollars worth of money.
We've done lots of deals.
Yeah, yeah.
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 Sometimes happens that way.
She's busy.
It's that voice on the other end of the line.
Yeah. Totally. Well, I'm so inspired by your story and we're gonna put um anything you can tell us about the future projects.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I do have some stuff uh happening right now. So um, I have a large uh collection coming with a very large retailer. I can't say the name because of NDAs, but be on the lookout for that. I'll definitely advertise that.
And it'll say like Walker Noble.
You know, with four or so and so. Um, I have a collection with Yeti with the thermal, with the, you know, coming out um this, the holidays. So that's gonna be nice. I did about like four designs for them, which is gonna be great.
Cool.
Made well selling right now. Um, I just jumped into kids. So I'm I've done some more cool stuff for kids. Yeah, like bibs and onesies and all the, you know, yeah, I'm definitely inspired to do that, right? Yeah, so that's coming. Um, what else off the top of my head? A lot of stuff dealing with national parks and also the National Park, you know, whole department and all that kinda stuff. That's gonna be big.
That's different. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's big.
So it's like graphics for?
Yeah, so um, really quick, just a little background. My wife was, she's black. She was adopted by a white family from Brazil. And you know, I grew up in a very urban, you know, community. So I didn't grow up going to national parks and hiking. I used to call hiking dramatic walking, right?
That's fair.
Yeah, like, you know, I didn't, you know, know about it. And so ever since being married to her, I started doing all of these things that really weren't a part of my, you know, growing up. So I've visited so many national parks and camping and hiking and just doing it all. And I've fallen in love with it. And so a large part of my inspiration, as you can see in my art with like the land, is nature. Uh, because it's almost like, it's almost new to me in a weird way. I could tell you all about cities and every city in the world and you know, stuff like that, but when the first time I went to Joshua Tree, for example, I was like, it's like another planet. Or like Bryce Canyon or something like that. You know, you see the hoods and you're like, what? Yeah. Um, so that's where a lot of like the inspiration comes from. And so because of that, I've kinda taken on, not on purpose, but I've kinda become like, hey, black people like nature too. Like, we're here. Like, I have a Subaru. Um, you know. We're a part of this world. Subaru, if you're listening, let's do so. You know, national parks and hiking and nature and the great outdoors is for everyone. And um, because of that, I think that it's caught the attention of a lot of people. And because of that, we've now created partnerships and collaborations and to do stuff.
That is amazing.
Love it. So much.
I love it.
Actually, the sky's the limit.
Yeah.
Sky is the limit. I I just really believe that.
Inspired. I feel like you're about to light the fire under so many people.
I hope so.
Where can we find you online? Where would you like us to follow you?
Yes, yes. So walkernoble.com. That's walker N O B L E dot com. At Walker Noble Studios on Instagram. I haven't done TikTok yet. I just don't.
Yeah, I know. You can only be good at so many things.
Yeah. It's hard, it's hard, right? Cause I'm transitioning to like reels, cause I know I have to, but it's like, it's good for creators, but not really for creatives.
Yeah.
Cause I don't know what I'm gonna do with like an art print. Like, I'm not gonna dance.
Right.
Like, hey, buy this art print, you know?
Yeah.
So I'm trying to.
Have your kid dance.
That would be weird.
Yeah, right there. Yeah, yeah.
Cute kids and cats are really successful.
This is true. This is true.
That's what TikTok's there for, cute cat video.
There you go. There you go.
Boom.
Yeah, so just be on the lookout, you know, go to Walker Noble Studios on Instagram. I'm always gonna, you know, post whatever collaborations we have coming up. We have some great, great collaborations I think you guys will be excited about. And um.
Can't wait.
Just growing.
Yeah. Thank you so much for joining us. His whole like narrative, I mean, it was happening in real time while we were searching for a house. And what that interview just said to me as a real estate agent, and I'm honored by flattered by the things that he was saying, is that the the knowledge and the thinking and the, you know, strategizing and all the things I'm saying are actually landing.
Right, right.
You know, like, he got it. And it's game changing. And you know, I foresee a uh a real estate empire in his future.
A hundred percent.
He's got the bug. Yeah. But you know, it's like, again, not to bring it back to training all the time, but you know, it's like sometimes when we're talking to agents um, and training new agents, it's like, we're saying, look, you gotta find the opportunity. You gotta find the space. Like, don't let anyone tell you no, you know, like figure out what makes you special and you valuable and take that, you know.
But there's a fire that you have to have burning in within you though.
That's true.
And we're all come out of this like constitution, like we're all come out of this like school that puts you in that box. And we're all have to figure out how to break out in life and and walk our own path.
It's true.
Yeah.
And walk it nobly.
That was good.
Was that punny?
That was really funny.
That was good.
Okay, thanks. I guess it's not just fly puns we've got.
But puns on the fly.
No, but you know what? Like, I I just am so inspired by him and everything that he was just talking about and everything he's done. I think the thing that resonated most with me out of what he was saying is, you know, not taking no for an answer and not seeing hurdles as, you know, roadblocks that prevented him from keep, you know, going on. He found his way around those things.
Yeah.
And I think that he should speak to everyone who thinks that they are disempowered in some way.
Totally.
You know, because that is an empowered man.
Like that.
That ballsy move when they had called him, we need twenty five thousand units. He could have said, uh, sorry, can't. But he's like, that's all?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Exactly. And that is that moment of where like you need to have some
future vision of.
Yeah, you have to have a little bit of like vision, right? To like, okay, we'll do it.
When things seem so out of reach, it's easy for people to imagine there's no distance between me and my little five hundred credit score and two thousand dollars that I barely scraped from the past couple of years of working so hard, you know, to the house in the hills. But in fact, there is completely a path to that. You just haven't looked hard enough. You haven't found it yet. You know, and I think that like, when I, when I, when we were working together and we were trying to figure things out, you know, there were a lot of moments where he's like, okay. So if I do this, is this a short term plan? Is this a long term? Like, he was, he was thinking about what the future part of what he wants as the outcome is gonna look like. And he was trying to figure out if this house or that house fits into that plan. So we were looking at houses and writing on houses that were totally renovated at first. And those are the ones that had the multiple offers and, you know, we're competing with cash and um, you know, whatever. And so the house that he got